Well, Mary Jo and I.
Well, yeah.
Can you get an agenda? All to order, the Ocean Insurance Library Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, July 12, 2023. So do we have any changes to the meeting agenda? I do have one.
You do?
I do. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, under new business, I would like to add a frequency and topics of the board reports to the city council.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna cover that under old business, under city council presentation, so that's why I didn't include it. So. Well, I think we're talking about a little bit of change in our.
Yeah, okay.
So with that change, when we have an approval of the agenda, there's no other changes?
So moved.
Okay. In favor? Okay, we have a meeting agenda. Do we have any public communication?
No.
And nobody on line for us?
Nope.
Okay.
Hey, Allison's here.
Here. So an official welcome to Allison in person, writing in on the screen. But again, we really do thank you for joining us. It is, it has been quite nice after our last three eight months, we did not come to most of our meetings. Well, and this coming year with my new position, you won't see me jumping up to chase kids during the meeting. We all have my own little room to myself.
Is it padded?
And we have two esteemed guests with us today.
Do you?
Oh, yeah. And no public comment?
Does everybody know these two?
I don't think so.
You wanna introduce yourself, Jeanne?
I believe that, and actually used to be on the library. Oh, it's a great, oh, okay.
Which was the liaison.
Yes.
That used to be our.
I used to be in the library work too.
Yeah.
These two were part of the responsible for getting us on the general, on the general side.
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
At least they both are.
And above them. That's come up in our meetings where we get asked questions about the library. And I wanna bring up how we did that and how it hamstrings the library when you're on a. Let me fix right, because like, for instance, the things that when you and I and Bob sat down that time and we had to cut 10% off by everything.
Yep.
What did, what did we cut out totally? I can't remember what it was, but there was a couple of things we cut out totally.
I have those notes.
Yeah, and that would be interesting to let people know.
Yeah.
Because we dropped the, we dropped the budget for buying new books, subscriptions, all those things that, that needed to happen. People don't understand that. Well, let this go live.
Right.
Well, then you can't get grants either.
Right. Yeah. I'm gonna be able to bring that up when I'm asked that question.
Okay, any answers to questions, but you know.
Yeah, I'll be in the steps.
I have all the notes.
Okay. And you can do it too. Yeah.
Uh, let's take a look at the Board of Trustees minutes from June 14, 2023. And I had a one requirement, Alex. Uh, and that's where it says, uh, Timberland Library is closing some branches. And I think, uh, it should be Timberland Library is considering closing a branch.
Oh, I'm trying to understand how many, okay, I'll change that.
I, I could not find, I checked it online and I could not find that they had made a final decision on that.
Okay.
Do you know anything, Kita?
Not definite either.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll change that.
But it did not work. Yeah, I, I did look and I didn't find anything.
So what if I do this? I, I contact Timberland to see if they already have closed it, and if they have closed it, I'd leave it as it is. And if they have not, I'll change it to say it's considered.
That's one. You know, I, like I said, I could not find anything online.
Well, just call them.
Okay, there you go. And if you update it, we did the draw, we send it to me and I get it to Sarah. Okay? Yeah, we'll, we'll change it.
Sure.
Okay. Good. What was interesting though, was I did find online that during 2018, they were considering closing many branches, including, including the Hoqueoan and Montesino.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep. Yeah.
Looking, closing six branches at that point.
Ooh, and they are not, at this point in time, fully open to pre-COVID hours of operation either.
They are not? Oh my, I'm so glad we're not part of them.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was, you know, interesting to see that Amanda Park was also on that list at, at that time. And, uh, the board did not allow them to close branches that were in terms of their long-term financial planning. Uh, so what they do is just cut hours at all of those branches because they still don't have the money for it. Okay, the other one I found, um, is at the bottom of page two, it just liaison should be single, singular. Anything else for the minutes? I didn't see anything. Jenny. Okay, motion through group. I spoke with you through the minutes of the last meeting.
Done.
In favor?
I, I.
Okay, the Board of Trustees minutes for June 14, 2023 are approved. Now, Kita, what's happening at the library?
I'm not. Before I give my report, I just wanted to introduce you to Jeff Britton. And I think you know Jenny and Susan Robinson, and there's this gal named Allison something around here. And I think you know Denise and Alex and myself, I think you knew Jeff and Susan Robinson.
Hi, you know Susan, okay. Hi Lisa.
Hi, guys.
Nice meeting.
There we go. And I remember this Jeff, I had a good friend named Jim Britton, so I always called him Jim, always. That's good, I've known him for years and he's still Jim, but no, I got it right. What's happening at the library? I just got off the radio and I spoke solid for 30 minutes on what's happening with the radio this morning, or with the library this morning, with your library. Um, the July flyers are on the table. We have a full slate of programs. Coming up today is line dancing on the, at five o'clock with Diane, who used to run the convention center, who does line dancing at the convention, at the community club, refused to. Then we have book group, we have a drone program, we have Ikibana, the language of flowers. We have the ukulele petting zoo, which sounds fun, they're gonna bring all sorts of ukuleles in here, and people are gonna learn how to play. Thank you, Susan. Um, we're gonna have the Olympic National Marine Sanctuary from Corning Angeles come and do whale songs, acoustics, hydroacoustics, is what they call it. Um, the hot dog party, we had 225, it went very well. Um, John, the mayor, and Scott was the administrator, cooked and handed out hot dogs. And what was really interesting happening from that event was many people, and I would say five or six families, according to Michelle, came because they saw the sign, free hot dogs, but they're part-time residents and they did not realize they could get a library card and use the library services and participate. And that was just like, oh, so, you know, we're trying to get out there to everybody, but now we don't always get out there. So that was real, really nice. And then one of those people showed up at the Friends meeting on Monday.
Yes.
So it was just really, really nice. So the hot dog party was a real success, very well organized by the Friends and attended. Today, we have Riverito, the Jungler Magician, coming for the kids. We have Art Spark Watercoloring Program for the kids on the 22nd. And then we have Reptile Lady, which I think I already mentioned, it's Reptile Man's daughter. And, cause Reptile Man finally retired, he's older than me, and, um, his son is running the zoo in Monroe. And then on the 27th, we have a new program that we haven't had called Steel Drums by Ian Dobson. So it's a steel drum performance, it's gonna be really, really fun.
Is it only for kids or?
No. Yeah, no. And I, the steel drum guy was recommended by two people, I've not, you know, haven't, so I hope it's good, but I love steel drums, so it should be. And then, um, Michelle is pulling off one of her famous teen programs Friday night, Teen Murder Mystery Night. Watch out, and she's giving all the kids parts and they've got costumes and Sherlock Holmes hats and all sorts of stuff, so that's good. But, and then, um, our art in the library this month is Ellie Smith, who is, it's beautiful work, Stitchery. And she's nationally and internationally published in, um, art journals and participated in a traveling exhibition in Japan and 32 European countries. So she's, so it's really, really well done. And then we have, um, the, um, regular Bookateki, the display case is fun, Master Gardeners did a beautiful job with it. And because we don't meet until the middle of August, I wanted to share some August events with you. Oh, and Nick is doing a computer program class once a month. And the July program is file organization, how you manage your files, your folders, how you create them, how you delete them, how you find what you're looking for in your files. And that's, um, next Wednesday, the 19th at 9:30, there is registration because we have only 12 seats. So in August, we have a state poet laureate coming, which is a really big deal. Um, the new poet laureate, they go from August to, from April to April, and her name is Ariane True, and she'll be here at 2 o'clock. I'm really excited about that one. And then we have a professor from Graves Harbor Community College coming on the 9th of August to do a creative writing workshop. It'll be an hour and a half long workshop. And then the big one is the watermelon from the Friends, it's gonna be August 11th. Um, we have a little glitch in it, we can't seem to find, the organizer of it can't seem to find watermelons with seeds. Nico wants to do a seed spitting contest, say that fast. So we may not have a seed spitting contest, but we may, anyway, they're looking for seeds. So that's August 11th, it's gonna be fun. Um, we have hired Bill Seaman, the one man band, a lot of you know Bill, and Frank Matic, who is the harmonica and harp guy. They're gonna do an hour presentation at 1 o'clock during the watermelon feed, so.
What date is that?
August 11th. And it's a Friday, 11 to 2, so it should be lots of fun, and they're performing at 1, right in the middle. And then the Master Gardeners and Garden by the Sea are putting on a really fun workshop on the 12th of August for kids 5 through 10. And it's going to be making birdhouses, and you'll see samples in the display case right now, they're adorable. They're like, like this big, the little, like balsa wood type birdhouses, and they're gonna decorate and paint them, and then they're also gonna do a flying bird mobile. Get my mobile movement here? Yeah, and it is, um, limited registration, so, but kids 5 to 10 can do that, this should be really, really fun. And they are sponsoring the whole program, no library funds are going for that program, which is really nice. And then finally, in August, we have karaoke program on the 16th. Uh, and I'm sure you all know Canopy is up and running and it's doing really well. I guesstimated on how much we had to pay for it each month, compared to what other libraries of our size with this number of hard registrations. And so far, we're doing very well, we're not going over. This program was put in as a new service in the 23, 24 budget. So, um, council approved it and it's up and running. And Susan, you wanna add what you're doing to promote it?
Oh yeah, we're gonna have an ad in that Ocean Observer for both Libby and Canopy. Big ones, maybe color ones.
Right.
Yeah.
Sponsored by her.
Everybody will, everybody will know.
Susan, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Susan's painful.
Kita, my wife saw on the internet that somebody signed up and was told that they got 30 days of Canopy for free and then it's $5 or $50 or some charge after that. It's totally free, right?
It's totally free. You, you need to put in your library card.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you gotta choose your library. Now, there's no charge to the public.
Yeah, there isn't.
What, the way that it works is you get credits. And credits doesn't equal one movie, cause there's free movies, there's different types of credits, but I chose five credits per month for a library card. So that should be, if you have trouble, come in and see Nick with the Bookateki and we'll, we'll get it set up for you. So I have had no complaints, I've had no issues with Canopy, it's been fabulous, once they settle down and overdrive bottom to get it set up.
What's cool about it, I've been playing on a lot. So the great courses, you can start one and there might be 24 classes in there, and even if you're, when the month changes, you think, oh, I'm gonna lose all my classes, you still get to hold on to them. And finish that course, and that course, you get one course free a month. So then you can start a whole nother course, you, you'll never run out of courses the way it is. And then you get five free ones, and a lot of those are like series, like somebody has like two or three things in a series, that's only one.
That's, yeah.
And then there's a whole big line of them that are just free, like for that month. Sometimes it's around, around the theme, then all the kid stuff are credit-free as well. So you will not run out, the, the, it is such a deep catalog, it is amazing. I mean, you just keep going and going down the different rabbit holes and the documentaries alone would keep you going for like years.
I mean, and you said you bookmarked or saved?
I've saved like 60 things already.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be doing this till I die. But it, I'm so glad to have it, I'm, thank you so much, so good pushing that and getting that.
I've been trying for several years, so I'm totally grateful to get going this year.
Yeah. So how many people have signed up, do you know?
Um.
Last I checked, it was 20, and that was like just.
No, we have 22 just this month, and I, I don't know exactly.
Okay.
I wanna say 50 last month in the two weeks.
Oh, really?
Okay. But it's more the amount that they spend, that it comes out of the book budget.
Right.
So I have to make sure I stay in line, because if I reach that point, they'll send me, Canopy will send me a warning, but then they cut off service to everybody.
Oh.
Cause I've reached my, it's 150 is what I put in for it. So I'm watching it every day.
After the ad goes up, we'll wanna watch that then to see if everybody.
I check it every morning.
Dog piles on that.
Yeah, yeah. Cause we're promoting it, so we'll see, and I can up it. And, and even if we go under 150, we only pay for what we use.
Oh.
But if we start to go over, then that creates an issue with, um, PR, and I don't want that.
Okay.
So, but I, I'm on it, so we'll get it up. But yeah, I have heard no negatives about the service. Have trouble, talk to Nick.
I will be there.
So, and, um, the staffs this time, things were a little slower, but we're still right up there and our door counts are still growing. And, um, I'm real excited the way the library is moving right now, we are just so busy. And I think we had 88 meetings in here last month. Yeah, 88. Um, 88, yes. So it's, it's a well-used library. Any questions?
Just to comment, the number of people who attended in this was huge, it was enormous.
Yes, yes, we've been in the 200s for the ice cream social, the party, we had 60-something, almost 70 for Sheila Roberts. Mount St. Helen's had over 60. Uh, the author that came, who wrote Into the Woods, was 30. Um, it's been, everything's been well received.
Yeah, they did turn out yesterday too.
Yeah, yesterday was not a library program.
Oh, that's true. Sorry about that, Jess, Friends of the Library, okay.
Right, that's why.
That's right.
Yeah, also in my report.
Yeah, okay, so.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Madam Friends, I'm done.
Yeah, I mean, my only, one question is, uh, how do we get these, some of these statistics out to the public? You know, so they can see the incredible use of the library.
I think that might come under your frequency and topic council presentation.
Yeah, but, but I think we're talking about a different audience, I think we're talking about more of a, you know, general audience than the people who are going to council or listening to the council.
But in that report, are you gonna give a update on the advocacy committee?
Uh, I, I, I can.
Or do you want me, you want me to talk about it now?
Well, I think that, uh, I think, let's put that under the, um, let's hold off on the, the old business. I mean, we do have, uh, Jenny, you are scheduled for the 24th, and then let's hold off the additional dates until we talk about, uh, the, the presentations to council. Other new business. So, um, we did create, well, do you wanna talk about the creation of the advocacy committee?
Right, I created a committee and it's, um, two people from the board, this board, Susan and Denise, two people from the foundation, one person from the Friends and a citizen. And John, the mayor, has been in on the initial meeting, as has Angie Fulkers. And the purpose of this committee was to get the facts out about what the library does, positive information and, um, facts about it. And so four things came out of that committee. We, um, a couple of the people took on putting out a fact sheet. And then John and I wrote it and it's being distributed as we speak. Now, this fact sheet is only going to candidates and current council people, so that's one thing. The second thing is another group of three people on the advocacy committee are putting together a postcard, mailer, flyer of some sort that we don't know what it looks like. That is gonna be more of what she's saying, the facts to get things out, how many books we check out, how many 88 meeting rooms we use, and blah, 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 blah. Kathy Baker and I have been working on numbers, and I've been pulling numbers for her. The draft of that hopefully will come about next week. And then I'll pull the committee back together and we'll review it and then figure out how we're gonna get it out to them. They wanted to do a big postcard, um, out somehow, not just a little thing, not just a flyer, but something substantial. That's the last we met, that's the last we talked about, so I'm not sure if the format's gonna come out that way or not, it's still in the work in production. Then the second, the third thing that we're going to do is, um, have candidate forums sponsored by the Friends of the Library solely. And as you all know, we had the first one yesterday, and we're sort of planning on having the rest of them for the general election in September on Saturday afternoons. Um, but I'm not sure that's been totally finalized yet, but we're, we're working on that. The advocacy committee has thought it was a good idea, so we'll see where that goes. And then finally, the fourth piece is the council piece that came up, um, during the meeting, and this committee met for three hours. And we really did a lot of it, and they were very engaged in supporting the library. And what we thought we'd do is the Board of Trustees, you have at staff reports on the agenda where you can talk for two, three, five minutes. Remember, we changed that to the top of the agenda, council agenda. And then they have more business, and then next is the public, public communication, where it's three minutes. So we thought, the committee thought that as a library services and what we do needs to be really sold to people. Have somebody come during the three minutes and talk about their experience with a subject at the library. And the example that came up was Bookateki. And so Nick and I would choose somebody that was willing to go talk for three minutes, have some kind of a touchy-feely heartstring story. You know, you wanna, I don't know what, and then maybe have a teen from the TAB come and, you know, they love the library, they like to read, they love the teen event, you know, some heartstring, touchy. Kinda like we had for that one council meeting in February, August, whenever that was, the, um, fly, we had everybody come. And there was that guy with the child.
Yeah.
Like it, that's what we're trying to accomplish, but targeting on a service, you know, each month. And so that's what we're bringing up today.
And you have one person per month do that?
Or that's the, the question that.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't talk about the logistics and let me, um.
Denise met with the other person on the committee and came up with some topics and some ideas on how this would work. Hope you brought your copy, Kita. Yeah, I have my copy. You have it? No, I don't. Okay, well then give the.
I'll give it to Jim. So this was the first brainstorming, we did not talk about logistics, but, um, as you know, the, we speak to, to council and talk about what is going on. But particularly, you know, it's our way of getting out to council, uh, you know, what is upcoming at the library, all of the programs, what we're focusing on. So the idea was in addition to what we kind of normally do, that we would have, uh, add something about a particular topic. And then we would then have the staff work with people to invite someone to come and to say something, that, that public comment. So we didn't talk about the logistics of, of how that would happen, uh, because it would really be working with staff to, to do that. But these were the topics that came up, uh, initially, as Lynn and I, Lynn Urbina was the other person from the advocacy committee. Uh, so we were talking about Bookateki, uh, individual experiences. Um, one thing that Kita had, uh, spoken to us about was how someone was trying to access their health information. And Nick taught them how to do that. But then there's also the class experience that, uh, we're now doing, that Nick is full-time and able to do, and we know people are signing up for that. Uh, also, the computers and Wi-Fi for the people who simply don't have it in town. Um, meeting room use, sample organizations, genealogy, Sasquatch, and I don't know who else, I'm not sure. Sasquatch would be a good one, but it might be an interesting one for council. Um, uh, under teens, we divided this by age group, uh, Teen Advisory Board, Dungeons and Dragons, virtual reality, which is, uh, coming. Outreach visits to North Beach Junior High and High School, um, children, the pre-summer programs, uh, homeschoolers, Storytime's craft. So just a, a starting list of what we could focus on. So, uh, actually, I'm gonna call it to Allison here, what, what do you think?
I think it's a great idea, because, I mean, I love the reports, but to actually hear, like, you were saying, when Deras and Sophia went up and talked that night. And I think that, that's the kind of stuff that I think people really need to hear, you know, from the actual people who are taking advantage of all the services we have. I love this idea. I think it's great.
It's great too.
And I would say every meeting, if you could get somebody there every meeting, because there's so much offered, that you still couldn't cover it all.
Well, that was, I know, which would be the second one.
That's just my opinion, but yeah, I, you know, it would be so nice hearing these wonderful public comments and happy public comments.
Yes, happy public comments, yes. Ancient service experiences.
Ooh, yeah, there we go. So Allison, how many people, we think if we had a topic for a council meeting and we had three, is that too many?
No, I don't think so, cause we wanna get the word across.
Exactly. And one, people might be busy on their phone or whatever, not paying attention, and then.
No, I, yeah, if, if there's a way, yeah, I don't think three people giving a, a positive public comment on what the library's done for them, I don't think that's too much at all.
Are we talking three minutes?
So we're talking nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
Yeah.
But you know, not everybody talks three minutes. I, I think, since I've been keeping time, I've only had to cut three people off. And two of them were the same name, so.
Who knows, it might start a trend like.
Exactly.
People who are the water, had this greatest experience with the water department.
Positivity into those meetings, it would be great.
I think it'd be a big improvement over some of the ramps.
Yes.
That we get from.
Yes.
A certain segment of the population.
Right, yeah. Raise, instead of rank.
Huge improvement.
Yeah.
It's always nice to have positive things instead of just tearing everything down.
Yeah.
And in terms of the logistics of it, I'm the person now who posts things for the Friends of the Library on Fe, on Facebook. And many of these things are Friends of the Library things, so press them on to me and put them on, on Facebook. That puts it in a whole bunch of the different groups in, in the air.
I guess if you're gonna do three every session, you'd have to figure out if you got, if you could get that many people, and it seems like quite a few people.
Yeah, if you can get pretty great.
You know, but even at one, one, yeah.
Even just get one.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least one, yeah. And then my thought, um especially when we approach the teens, which I, Michelle and I have chatted about this, she's very willing to do that. But she would probably have to be up there to do a thirty-second intro.
Yeah.
As to why these kids are here.
An escort.
So, not that, not not that's a bad word, another word. What'd you say?
She would be acting as sort of a.
Chaperone.
Chaperone, thank you.
Right.
Not an escort.
So, of course, if we do this every meeting, that means that you all will need to commit.
And two speaking.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, that, well, that's true, actually, if we have, you know, Michelle do it, she could take one meeting and the board could still just do.
The board, the board report is more separate.
Yeah, and it's separate. If this board wants to do two.
I think it's it's better to come from a citizen. So I don't know that the board would, I mean, other than if it's your turn to go, or I go to a lot of the meetings anyway, so, but I don't. I think it's better, like, we do the board report and then some citizen comes up to say what a great thing they have. I think it has more weight.
I don't see them connected, other than it's library.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so I'm on the right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I I see the 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 one to three people that we have come to public comment section as a certain service.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and that's how we envisioned it, that it would, they would all talk about the same thing. So it's as if the board of trustees still wants to just keep the second Thursday during the staff report section, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
And let's subdue this.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I kind of like still having to be able to do that report, I think that's good.
Yeah, that's really important because, and with the way you guys always present your reports, it's it's very informative. And um you know, I know members of the council talk about it and they appreciate that, so.
Well, our report is an official.
Yeah.
Report, it's as opposed to uh anybody got anything to say out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Public, it's a, now we're gonna hear from the library because it's important.
Yeah, okay. So does everybody feel that's still enough, just during the the once a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
I think so.
Okay, and so, Kita, how um do you want um to coordinate? That, do you just wanna work from this list or?
Is there?
Do you see any involvement for for us in doing? Um well, first of all, I wanna know who wants to do August twenty-eighth.
I can do that, okay.
You're on, Alex. And Jenny, you're still confirmed for the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the sheet that Denise and Lynn put together, what strikes you as a first? What what service should we start this off with? What's what's a, what's popular, what's a big hitter, what's a?
Book attacky.
I I think, yeah, book, I mean, I've done both, I've done individual book attacky personally and I've done a booky techie class and they're both amazing, so.
Okay.
But the meeting room use, as a, as a person who's also has an organization that uses a meeting room, I think it's invaluable, so.
I'd like to hear about the outreach visits to the junior high and high school.
Yeah.
Cuz I've never really heard how that works.
Okay.
You know, and actually, we should probably like invite Michelle in one day and just have her, hey, how's that work? How do you, what do you do over there?
And you know, maybe that could be for September, when the back to school.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
And what I don't see here might be fun is the canopy thing, cuz that's a new service.
Yeah, somebody who, a big video file.
Sorry, I can't talk.
I already did, sort of, I was babbling away up there.
I mean, you can do that in the report, I mean, I, that's great in the report, for sure.
Somebody enthusiastic about videos.
Are are the teenagers, are they comfortable in talking in front of the council? I would think maybe some of them would.
Don't know, you don't know yet, I haven't asked anybody, okay.
Yeah, see, that's the next step then, is for me to talk to staff and figure out how we're going to approach this.
Yeah.
You have a a teen council that's kind of a ex officio uh part of this, that would be a good place to go. Advisory board, it'd be a good place to go to find out how they feeling.
Yeah.
Get in front of the whole city council.
Right, right.
This may be, I'm sorry, this may be out of out of sequence, but one of the places where I hear a lot is the art in the library, a lot of the artists are very motivated by it and a lot of people talk to me about it, I'm actually like this.
Oh, that that should be added, I think that should be added as a topic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I've added art in the library and canopy. And then I highlighted book attacky, meeting room use and outreach visits to the school. Okay, we will, I mean, for the fourteenth to start.
August fourteenth?
Yeah, I I, there's no way I can pull this together.
Um something I think, once school gets started, we are starting to have more and more homeschoolers in this area. So that might be a good topic to have, maybe one of the parents that loves homeschooling to talk about that after school starts.
Elvins.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I put that on your children, but I know that that goes across.
Yeah.
And they they are again signed up to use our meeting room twice a month, starting in September as they had. Cuz we, I approached them last year and I said, you guys gotta come here, you gotta come to the library, so they are.
So, and I know that may be more than that.
You gotta do that, yeah.
Alex, it also occurred to me, um how about if I take August twenty-eighth? Because I'm probably will not be around for September or October.
On yours?
Okay.
Where are you going?
Uh I'm going out to Colorado to visit my cousin and we're gonna do Utah. Okay, so next meeting, if you're informed, when's our next meeting? Monday night, so I'll have the occupation for the fourteenth, so if it's a go on fourteenth, if you're meeting on the ninth. Well, I don't just want to do to the, I'll be gone.
I know. But Chuck will back me up and make sure.
Fly right.
Since you all um approved the budget that we submit, this does require me paying Michelle and Nick and Nico, if he's involved, the time to go to that. So that takes them away from time in the building. And um Michelle and Nick are now full time, so it's not quite an issue. But just so you're aware, that doing this is not just easy. It takes rescheduling and uh book attacky is less available with, he has to spend a couple hours doing this and, you know. So just an awareness piece for you.
Okay.
And I do, I do think that it's a fabulous idea, personally, as the library director.
Okay, well, thank you, uh the second thing under new business is uh board contact information. Um if you look at our uh our our gorgeous pictures and bios on the um library website, you'll see that there's no way to.
He told us at the Friends meeting that every time the broad leaves a kitty is being adopted. Cause she's the cat person.
I'm not sure what the connection is, Alex.
Probably don't want to do that.
Yeah, um so there's two ways that we could um do that. Um one is to have a um a a a separate email where uh one of us would have to monitor it. The other would be to put our city email addresses on. Uh if you look at the city website, um under the library, there's my city uh email address and Kita's. But um so how, or we could just put mine under, but who, well, not mine, whoever is president of the board at the time. But I think we should have some way to contact us outside of the the library. Any?
And you're talking about the um our bios on the website.
Yeah, I can go to the the website, so if you, like I said, if you do go to the city webpage and you look under, you know, library, there's Kita's and mine, but you know, given that there's um, you know, topics that people might want to contact the board about. And this came about because Denise and I and Kathy Baker were putting together the Friends of the Library newsletter. And I suggested we have a contact point, being we're in an election year. And we hadn't done that before, we hadn't put her email, my email's all over the place, so it doesn't matter. But I thought there should be a board contact. And I didn't know if you wanted to just keep her city or if somebody's willing to monitor a general what, a general email address.
And then like board, board of trustees.
Right. At gmail dot com. And then bring suggestions or comments or, you know, questions to the meeting from that email address to address, does that make sense? So that's, that's how it all precipitated. And we ended up using her email address, her city address in the Friends newsletter.
Oh, okay, yeah, and that that's possible. The only problem with that is that the email then changes every time the board presidency changes.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
And I I like board of trustees at gmail dot com because it's not as personal and people feel like they can respond.
Yeah, yeah.
To it, so.
And and that's more traditional, if you look at other libraries, that will generally have a board of trustees one.
But the backside of it is.
And would it be B O T or spell it all?
I spell it all out. Board of trustees at gmail or at gmail or Yahoo, whatever, whatever, whatever. And I have a book attacky that can help set that up.
Great.
That sounds good to me.
Pardon me?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think it's great. I don't mind monitoring it if somebody sets it up, I'm not very good at setting it up.
We have maybe two people doing it, one takes the even days and we, and one takes the odd days.
Well, I can't ever, I won't be able to remember that. I don't think we'll get that many emails, do you?
Not right off.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Um but I think if we.
I like the David.
Then that's. I like to think ahead and as I said, it is an election year.
Yeah.
And there's a lot.
There's plenty to comment.
Going on, right. But the role of checking it would not be to respond.
Right.
The role would be to get the information to the board. And if it's a question that is eminently needed an answer, that would go to me. And I would disperse it to the board, cuz otherwise it's a quorum, you can't.
Right, right.
So, but the other thought on that is if it's not needed in response right away, to bring it to the meeting.
Okay.
As a topic and we'd add add that into um the agenda.
So what you're saying is, for instance, if I'm monitoring it and I see something that appears to need an immediate answer, I would forward it to you.
Right, and then I would get it out to the board.
And then you would give it out to the board, okay.
Unless it's something like, are you open today or something?
Yes, if it's common sense.
Yeah.
Right, but if it's, you know, at all, you're not sure, or there's more to that story than you know or think you know, so.
So you are saying you could answer the question if it was something like, are you open today?
Right, or when do you meet? When does the board meet, I wanna come talk to you.
Okay.
That, of course. But if it's, what does the board think about the tsunami hour?
Right, okay.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thanks.
And I'll figure out how to set it up with Nick.
Yeah, just make an appointment with him.
Okay.
And we'll use board of trustees at gmail, does that work?
Mm-hmm.
And there'll be a password. Good, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
Wonderful. And so what you're saying is, this would be posted on our website, okay?
And we could put it on. Information, like the Friends of the Library newsletter.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I I write for board of trustees, you know, which is a summary, then we can put the email there too. We could have Peter Stratt come in and put it on there. And the website. Yeah. Do you wanna look at the strat plan and tell me where you want it and I'll look at it.
Okay.
I will do that. So Jenny, tell me then when you're set up and then get the password to Jeff.
Yeah, okay. Cuz if it's set up, then if he has the password, you could go in anytime, right?
Right.
That's how it would work, yeah.
Yeah, and then I'd like the password as well, just as about, I'm not giving it to you. I don't need any more words.
More passwords for you.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I'll look at the strat plan on that and then Keith, I can just add it to this, send you an updated copy.
Right, and then I'll get it to Cam to update on the page as well.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for that discussion? Alex, Friends of the Library. Friends of the Library is being really very active. There's a lot of people who are coming to the meetings, which is very nice. They are having presentations. The idea is that the uh nonprofit organizations in the city are working independently and they're trying to bring them in so everybody knows what everybody else is doing. And the last meeting had pause, North Beach pause in, which I thought was great, cuz I love North Beach pause. Um and they are doing a lot of activities as you can all see. Um the book sales are going well, they're getting more volunteers, they're getting more more uh folks joining and paying attention to what's going on. I think the Friends of the Library are a very active and very productive group right now. Um of course, you all know about the big meeting for the primaries that I thought was very, 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 definitely very crowded. And um what else should I say? They're a really good group and what, do they have over a hundred and some members?
We do have over a hundred members. Second Monday, second Monday.
Yeah.
What time? Two o'clock, two o'clock.
One thirty for social.
We actually had quite a few socials show up this last time, it was over twenty, this room was.
Yeah. Mary Jo did an excellent job of moderating yesterday's event.
Yeah, I heard that from several people.
Yeah, really good job.
Yeah, I just wanted to add about the book sale, that when we opened, uh this was the first time that we did it on a holiday, kind of an impromptu one. And uh I had the first shift and the line was all the way out, the parking lot.
Yeah, it was just amazing. And thank you for for two people who bought books, so we appreciate it.
Um yeah, it was really, really busy.
Not to be the only thing.
Um it was over nine hundred dollars.
Wow, I know and I came into shop and it was later in the day, it was still really busy.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it it was, so Kathy is going to look at, you know, big events at the convention center this upcoming year when we have a lot of, cuz there were a lot of visitors. And they all said, a couple of people said that they saw the book sale on a coast access, which is, we're putting now ads on coast access. And that is paid for by the Friends of the Library. And uh other people saw the the signs out front.
And they also delivered flyers to the hotels.
Yes, yeah. So it it was really, really busy.
Yeah, I'm glad it's still busy, well, it must have been order for us to make that kind of money, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
At fifty cents a book.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Yeah, so uh, yeah.
So, those donations coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they are.
Okay, foundation report, find my foundation agenda here. I I think the the major thing that the foundation is doing is they are continuing to look for grants, particularly. Uh, they're promoting matching grants for organizations that will provide matching grants if you. Uh, matching donations, I should say, uh, if you're giving donation. A lot of the big companies like Boeing and Microsoft, so they're continuing looking into that to uh eventually make a list of that. Uh, they are looking for fundraising grants. And uh, we are still, they are still looking for uh an additional board member for the foundation.
Can they purchase those beautiful umbrellas?
And is it this month I'm attending for you, or is it next month? I've got it on my calendar, but I just can't think of it right now. What was the question?
I'm attending the foundation meeting for Denise, and I can't remember if it's this month or next.
Yeah, it's this month.
Thank you for all. Thank you for all the information you sent me, that was interesting.
And they do a full two hour meeting.
Yeah, they do.
Anything else to add? I have a meeting coming up on next Friday with Sarah Bisson, and we're looking at the opportunity of getting a ten thousand dollar Google. Ads grant, and that would give us ten thousand dollars for advertising. So we're looking to see if we qualify, only five oh one C threes qualify, libraries do not, so we're. We're gonna, so, two of the foundation board members, Sarah Bisson and myself, examine it, so we'll see. Yeah, so I think the real impetus of the foundation is, uh, you know, we spent so much time just really establishing it. Is now getting the word out. Yes, and getting the word out for, uh, you know, people donating through matching um donations. Getting the word out and looking at grants, and uh, they're still going to be looking at uh direct mailing. And the other thing they created was a legacy information flyer, and that's done. So if anybody wants to leave money to the foundation, and they will, they can do that, that's set up, that's on the webpage. Oh, and uh, well, you know, I did look at the Ocean Observer, it just came, was Kathy's article in it? I don't know, I haven't seen it.
Did it?
Oh, mine didn't. Yeah, and we're on the same street. But mine goes to the post office. Yeah, but I haven't, I haven't looked at. Susan's is in there too, so. Kathy wrote that Bakerwood and Arnold about the foundation, yeah.
Oh, sweet.
And yeah, and about the umbrellas, so that should be in there, again, just getting the word out. For all the activities, so I would hope Friends and the foundation have been really, really active. And committed to supporting the library, which is a part of their mission. Okay, Susan, public commenting council. What are you talking about?
I got there, sat down, and got called right up in a little fluster of flurry, and sort of really flustered and talked about um canopy. Or babbled on about that for about, I don't know, three minutes, and then I talked about the July, some of the July ones. And so, and invited all the council members, and said, please come and be a part of this lovely energy. I told them I was there one day, there one day, when the kids were here, you know, these little bundles of joy bouncing off everything. Yeah, you did a great job.
Thank you.
I never know how I sound. So it was fun.
May I add to the communication to council? That as we're going into primaries, it might be a good thing that when we go to the meet and greets, we always ask a question about the library. And whether they want to keep it in the general fund, just to keep the, the, in front of their mind.
Right, good idea. I'll get one spouse to do it like yesterday.
Actually, I did not know that he was going to.
Actually, talked about it before I was asked. Well, I think ob- obviously it's important, you know, and um, also, as a reminder, neither the uh foundation nor the Friends. Can campaign, you know, under that, under their name. Uh, for candidates, but you know, we can go to things as individuals, not as representing the board. Or the Friends, or the or the foundation, and um, and ask the hard questions about the library, or anything else. Okay, our next meeting is August ninth. Or anything else for the order?
I will not be attending that meeting, and I'm very sad, but I will be in, never heard of it till now, Hopkinson, Washington. Teaching a right response class. I think it's near Vancouver.
What's it called?
Hopkinson. Yes, it's population six thousand, and I'm going to teach their uh special education staff right now.
It's about our size.
Okay, officially adjourned, officially adjourned, obviously you're all anxious to leave. But I need a movement to adjourn, so who's? And anyone opposed? No.